The Indian River County Chamber of Commerce does not endorse any political candidates. We provide these videos to our community and to our members to offer them the opportunity to be educated as we go into a busy political season.
Introducing Laura Moss, running for Board of County Commissioners, District 5.
Laura Moss, Indian River County Commissioner and former mayor, City of Vero Beach. I served two terms on Vero Beach City Council. Vero Beach City Council is a two-year term, for those who might not know. So that's a total of four years. That was from 2016 to 2020. And in 2020, I was elected Indian River County Commissioner. So to all those who have moved here since 2016, welcome. And to all those who voted for me in 2016, 2018, and 2020, thank you very much. I'm working very hard on it. And well, it's been, it's been quite a time. For me, it's been especially interesting. I found out when I was leaving City Council that I'm actually the first woman in the history, 100-year history of the City of Vero Beach to start as mayor. Guess how many men did? I'll tell you the answer. It was nine. And that's over 100 years. Vero Beach celebrated its centennial in 2019. City of Sebastian is celebrating its centennial this year, as a matter of fact. And I am a centennial sponsor. You know, government, in my opinion, government, I see it as a partnership with the people. I don't believe in people having to come to me, to formal meetings, to speak with me. I'm out in the community, some people would say, almost relentlessly. I just, I love it. I mean, I come from the private sector. This is, 2016 was the first time that I held elected office. But frankly, if I had known how much I would love it, I definitely would have started sooner. It's, it's a great opportunity. And I tell our young people this because I try to encourage them to participate more in government. I tell them, it's a wonderful way to do good things for your own community. And you, you have perspectives and insights that honestly, you would, you would never obtain any other way. So I just, I love what I do and look forward to continuing many of the things that we're working on now in a second term. But it's been, it's, it's been great. It's been a great eight years now in government. And as I said, encourage everyone to participate in whatever form you are able. One example, one example that I wanted to give as, as a way of interacting with the community, when I became mayor back in 2016, 17, I re-instituted Coffee with the Mayor. And that was in conjunction with Main Street Vero Beach. It was held monthly, and it's still being held, I'm happy to say. It was successfully re-instituted. But the reason why I did that was that people would have an informal venue to meet. And again, that goes back to the issue of accessibility, of people being able to speak with elected people in, in a less formal manner. Because some people, and I learned this serving on City Council and later on County Commission, people don't necessarily want to attend a formal meeting and go to a microphone, introduce themselves, discuss things. So what I would do is I would always get there early, welcome people. I would tell everybody, you all have a second home. City Hall, or in this case, County Commission, that's your second home. You own it, you know, as a taxpayer, and, and you belong there. You should feel comfortable there. So I would go down and welcome them and ask them if they had any questions. Because I know that some people don't necessarily want to, you know, be videotaped, that sort of thing during public comment. But also with the municipalities, one of the things, and this was a little bit later, one of the things that I made a point of doing when I got elected to County Commission was attending the City Council meetings, what they call them are reorganization meetings. And that's when the city councils elect the mayor and the vice mayor. So I made a point of being there and also being there during any important meetings that they might have. Because there was, or there has been in the past, a, a distance, if you will, between County Commission and the city councils. And I, and I knew that, you know, having served on City Council, two terms, four years, I knew that existed. And I knew that there was a need to rectify that. And also, I'll mention it, reaching out to veterans has been something that I have focused on. I had the honor, speaking at first, I had the honor, and it was a very exciting election because you're sitting there right in the room. It was a general membership, it's about 100 people, and they're voting on you right then and there. So we'll, we'll tell you, that's exciting. But at any rate, I was the first civilian to be elected to the Board of Directors of Veterans Council. And I have to say, that was such an honor. And it was such a pleasure to, to serve them. And I'm happy to say that the county also has redoubled its efforts with regard to veterans. And by that, I mean the VSOs, or Veteran Service Organizations, at the county. The new budget comes out tomorrow. It'll be online, indianriver.gov. But we have allocated more funding for that. And we have increased hours at the, the VSO, Veteran Service Organization outlets, so they can come in and speak more readily. You don't have to wait. My understanding was there was a wait for an appointment. So I hope in the future, things will continue to get easier and better for our veterans. Wow, just wow. There could not be a better time, and I thank God for this, could not be a better time to be on County Commission. We are redoing everything. And I am not exaggerating. You'll see. And they're all good things. They're all changes that needed to be happened, that needed to happen. As I said earlier, having served four years on City Council gave me a perspective of County Commission. And when I was elected to County Commission at the time, my predecessor was, well, as I should say, pushing a different agenda. And I was elected with a mandate for change. It was important to people that County Commission changed. I'm sorry to say, there was, I'm trying to be apologetic here. There was an arrogance perhaps, or just a, a general unfriendliness. And that was, you know, to the community, to the municipalities, to, you know, to different entities outside the, outside the county building. And that, that needed to change, and it is. I'm so happy. We had the opportunity to have a new county administrator. And for those who don't know, by the way, because I know a lot of people think that the staff reports to us, and by that I mean County Commission, and that's not the case. The staff, which is hundreds of people, report to the county administrator. So last year, we undertook a search for a new county administrator. And again, like I said, wow, because I got my first choice. I mean, out of 50 somewhat applicants, he was my first choice. And we just fought and fought and fought and fought till we got, you know, whittled it down, whittled it down. And there was that last five-hour meeting. I think it almost got bloody, but it was so worth it. But Mr. Takanich comes to us with a, and from not far away, from St. Lucie County, with a background in innovation, which is what we certainly needed, and he's an Army Ranger. So nothing scares him. Let's talk about veterans. Nothing scares him. Because we needed to redo so much, and we are. And, you know, I hate lists, but I'm going to take a moment, just bear with me, because I want to tell you some of the things we're working on. And it's not just, these are studies or plans, but it's not just like, oh, you know, another study. No. We're actually implementing all of this. I mean, remember, he's a Ranger. He doesn't do it, doesn't do it, make a plan and then not follow through. There's plenty of follow-through. And I'm the same way. So we're, you know, we're totally in sync, and the rest of the Commission too, to my knowledge. But these are just a few of the things. Yes, I'm going to read a list, so just, you'll bear with me a minute. We're updating our comprehensive plan, conducting an urban surface area study, the very first in the history of the county, Parks and Recreation Master Plan, and Impact V Study, that's when developers come in, a comprehensive utilities rate analysis, a stormwater master plan, vulnerability assessment, manatee protection plan, see, we didn't leave them out either, beach preservation plan, and economic development plan. So those are the different studies and plans. Not every single one of them is underway at this moment, but you know, honestly, a fair number of them currently are underway. I mean, it's just, it's just been incredible for me to, to watch all of this taking place. And of course, you want to be part of it. Because when the people, there were consultants that came in, I don't think I read it on this list, no. But we're working on a strategic plan. And there were consultants that came in, and I love that. Because I love being, being a visionary, you know, what, what are the possibilities? In fact, I asked them, I don't, I don't have it yet, but I asked them, I said, could you do a map that shows like if we developed absolutely everything? Because development, I think scares me and scares everybody right now. If we did everything, what would we look like? I was just curious, but I don't want to go there, don't worry. But it was funny, their answer was, well, we usually plan five years out or 10 years out, you know, we don't plan, you know, that far out. I said, well, just as a, you know, what if, a what-if scenario. So I haven't seen that yet, but I'll get back to you when I do. But just, and to add a couple of other things, and these are two, this is not talking now about being a visionary, but this is addressing current problems. A new department is being added, and that will be a building department. And as, as you may know, unless you're new to our community, you may know that we have had, I mean, honestly, since I was the mayor of Vero Beach, which goes back to 2016, have had complaints on building permits. So I probably know better than anybody. I've been hearing complaints before I was even on County Commission. So we're going to have a separate department that will take care of that. And two things that had been in silos that caused huge problems, there were even front-page problems, if you saw TC Palm, and actually, it's right down the block here from the chamber, which is Jeff Palachi's 21st Century Amendment Distillery. Places like that, it had problems because there were silos. And one was the permitting department, and the other one was fire prevention. So now, guess what? They're going to be both in that same department. So you won't have that problem. And, and God bless them. Jeff Palachi's an amazing man, and he invited us, several of us went, county, several county commission members, and the fire chief went, and the county administrator went. And he outlined for us, you know, what his problems had been in terms of permitting and also obtaining that fire prevention. Okay. And Mr. Takanich himself, he and his wife, I think bought property here in 2020, so of course, he had no idea he would end up being the county administrator for the county, but in Indian River County. So he personally is going through the permitting process. So he will certainly understand it, the good, the bad, and the ugly, from the inside out. So looking forward to all of these different things. As I said, some visionary, some first-time efforts, and others just to, to address very, very seriously existing situations. And some of those situations, I'm sorry to say, have existed for quite a long time. So it's going to be a huge relief, I think, to people and businesses that these longstanding problems will be addressed and hopefully rectified. All right. So now we're going to address our challenges. The first one that comes to mind to me is preserving our sense of community. And I, you know, I'm out there every day. And honestly, every single day, I talk to at least one person, usually more, who have moved here within the last few years, some of them five years. And they come from, and I'm sure that the chamber hears this story as well, and they come from, I mean, nice places, Naples, Boca, the one that really scared me though was Stewart, and Stewart, and tell me, it got too crowded. It got too crowded. It, it was unpleasant for them. They didn't like it anymore. And they, and, and here's what they say, here's the scariest part, okay? I hope you're not listening to this in the dark, all right? Here's the scariest part. They say, wow, you know, like 20 years ago, 30 years ago, so in one case, I heard 40, it was beautiful. It was just like Vero is now. All right. Well, you know what? We better be really, really careful. Because if we like it the way it is now, guess what? It happens little by little. I mean, they didn't wake up one day and all of a sudden it was like that. No, that's, that's not how it happens. So I think we need to be really careful. And I, I always keep that in the back of my mind, any vote we take, it doesn't matter what it's about. If it affects sense of community, I, I think to myself, this does not sound good. I think that's our, our single, that's what attracts people here. I think that's our single greatest asset. And to me, and I coined this term, but feel free to use it. This was at a Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council workshop that I was in. I said, you know, to me, sense of community is intangible infrastructure. Okay? It's, it's, and by that, I mean, you can't see it. It's not like a road or a bridge. Road or bridge, that's tangible infrastructure, but it's intangible infrastructure. And why is that? Because everything rests on it. Everything rests on sense of community. Think what happens when you don't have it. And I think, you know, we've seen a lot of that these days, especially in the cities. And I hate to say this, it's terrible to see these news reports of our larger cities and what they're going through. I mean, it's much easier to fix tangible infrastructure, and by that, again, I mean a road or a bridge, than to regain that sense of community if it's compromised. So I would say that's, that's to me, is the biggest challenge, is, is preserving that, preserving it and, and protecting it as we go along. So those of us who live here currently, don't wake up 10 or 20 years or 30 years from now and say, how did this happen? I don't want that to happen. The second challenge, I would say, is jobs. And I'm sure our Indian River Chamber of Commerce agrees with me there. And we'll be collaborating in the future on that. One of the programs, visionary programs, hasn't existed before, on the county side, is that we will be coming up with an economic development plan. And in fact, we're planning to hire someone, a person who, who's, who will hold the title Economic Development Specialist. And, you know, we need to do that because we need to, when we do attract people, it would, it would make our community stronger. For example, if we had a greater diversity of age groups, for example, our young people, you know, if we can retain them and have young families here. And also, if you have a diversity of sectors of, of jobs, industries, if you will, although that's, you know, industry sounds like heavy industry, and I don't mean that, but different job sectors. And because think about it, we are very heavily reliant on the hospitality industry here, which is wonderful. I mean, it's a great place. We have the beautiful beaches. We have all those social and cultural amenities that people enjoy here. But it's narrow. That's a very, very narrow focus hospitality. And we saw that with COVID. We were lucky, actually, not with COVID, but just, we were lucky in terms of the effect, that it wasn't worse, that the effect wasn't worse. The effect of COVID on tourism. We recovered, you know, fairly quickly, given the circumstances of a pandemic that, that generated huge uncertainty. I mean, we had no idea, you might recall this, at the time, we had no idea how long that was going to last. But fortunately, you know, people still wanted to come here. Maybe they weren't flying, but come here by car, be outdoors, because we have all of these wonderful outdoor places. So I think that, you know, the county, working more closely with the, the Indian River Chamber of Commerce on developing jobs, I think will prove to, you know, to strengthen and, and sustain that sense of community that I, that I mentioned earlier. And our third challenge, in my opinion, will be, or is, this is not in the future, it's today, being good stewards of our environment. And I, you know, I think we all feel that. Because I remember even back in my City Council days, you know, and that's only, you know, six to eight years ago, we would have environmental groups come in to talk to us, to vote on certain issues. And they felt that there was a resistance, and perhaps there was, I never felt resistant to it, but I guess there, there was a resistance where they had to get certain measures passed. But we are past that point, I'm happy to say. Everybody's on board. For example, with septic to sewer and that kind of thing, everybody understands the need for it. And now it's just a matter of finding the funding for it. So that, that kind of thing. I'm also, personally, I've been looking at things like, well, we've, you know, we've voted at times on, on wetlands, and I'm always against, or so far, thus far, you know, just been against filling in wetlands for, for development. And yes, that can happen. And also, we voted on, this was, this goes back a few years, but it's called CDD, which stands for Community Development District. These districts cannot exist within a county unless the county votes to allow it to exist. So I didn't want it. We have it. I got outvoted, but that's okay. That's how things work. You know, it always, always have to have a give and take. And that's why we love our freedoms and freedom of speech and democracy as, as, you know, as, as we do. But that being said, just so you understand what it is, that's like a Disney World situation or a tradition in St. Lucie County. In our county, it has to be at least 500 acres or more. So, you know, that, I, I just didn't see that as, as a good path. I mean, I'm very concerned about overdevelopment. And I think we need to be extremely cautious about it, especially having to do with our water supply. And, and again, this goes back to not just quality, we're all familiar with that, we've all been exposed one way or another. Our environmental groups do such a good job. I'm thinking of Environmental Learning Center, Coastal Connections, Friends of St. Sebastian River, I mean, Pelican Island Audubon Society. We have so many wonderful environmental groups out there. So, you know, we, we, we understand the importance of it, but you know, sometimes it's just difficult for it to translate, you know, for it to trickle down. So, you know, I encourage everyone to be part of it to the extent you're able, especially something, for example, like native plants. I'm very proud, if you've ever been there, to City Hall, that happened while I was there. And it's funny, while I was, while I was there, we redid that entire landscape. And then when I went to, and I told them they would get an award for that, and they did. I was already gone. I said, you're going to see, this is going to be great. And it was. And I'm glad the city got an award for that, and I really am, even if I was gone, by the time they received it. But we also, when I went to County Commission, I had native plant gardens on the agenda the day I was sworn in. And it took me, it took me, you know, a number of months. And that, by the way, I want to thank Pelican Island Audubon Society. That was not, it was not taxpayer dollars, they raised the funding for it. But it's out there, and it's educational. The point is, do try this at home. Because each one of us can contribute to the environment in whatever small way. And I know the Audubon Society sells native plants, Environmental Learning Center sells native plants, and they will talk to you about it. It's something you can do little by little, and that everyone can participate in and contribute to, and feel good about. You know, you are doing, I mean, just think about it. If every single one of us took one small action to help the environment, I mean, it's going to, it's going to make everything better for everybody. My vision is that we never add so many people to this place that we destroy what we currently have. Because what we currently have is pretty wonderful. But we will need to protect and preserve it. And there are, there are ways to do that. And an important way, now, yeah, now I'm going to ask you to do something, other than vote for me. Now, I'm going to ask you to, to participate. And I'm, I'm very sincere about this. One of the things I've seen, having spent four years on City Council and four years on County Commission, is that at City Council, the city, which granted is, you know, is a lot smaller, 13 square miles, the people, people participate a lot more. We pack the house all the time. Yes, there are contentious issues, and that certainly contributes to it. But with County Commission, I don't find that we have that same level of enthusiasm or interest. And I'm hoping that, and that's how things happen, as we were talking about earlier, changes don't happen overnight. Changes happen over time, little by little. And what I would ask is, depending upon where you live, city, county, if you live, and by the way, for the newcomers, there are three cities, that's Sebastian, Vero Beach, and Felsmere, and two towns, Indian River Shores and Orchid. And the rest is affectionately referred to as the unincorporated. That's the county. But remember, of course, I'm sorry, Laura. But remember, everyone who lives in a city is also in the county. So that's, that's an important thing to keep in mind. Everyone, everyone in the county is a county resident. So what I'm going to ask, if you would, is to check the agenda for, if you're in the city, your City Council meetings, and everyone in the county, just check the county agenda. It's online, the county website, which is new, by the way, and has a lot of great resources on it. Parks and Recreation, for example, will tell you about all the trails. But what we're discussing now is meetings. So we, we meet twice a month. Okay, we meet the first and the third Tuesday at 9:00. Not asking you to attend, I know people are busy, and that's why I try to go to you. I don't ask you to come to me. But check the agenda, if you would, and see if there's a topic that interests you. On that agenda, you know, the topics are listed, and then behind the topic is the background material on that topic. So if there's something of concern to you, like, oh, they're, they're going to talk about, you know, filling in wetlands, or, oh, they're going to talk about developing, you know, 500 acres at a time, you can make plans. You can either, you can attend the meeting. Everything's videotaped, so you can watch the meeting afterward at your convenience. And send us emails or call. We, we do. And I, I know my colleagues are the same, I know I can speak for them in this regard. Every email that comes in, we, we take it very seriously, always. Even during COVID, when I would get, it took me weeks sometimes to answer a single day's mail. But I didn't, I didn't want to use a template. I like everything to be personal. So I will, you know, and I'm sure they do the same thing. You know, we will get back to you. It makes a difference, is my point. It makes a difference. You know, please communicate with us, please participate. And, and, and please, honestly, please, because think about it. I mean, what happens in, you know, and I hate to be critical in any way, but if you think about what happens in Washington DC, or sometimes even in Tallahassee, they end up just talking to each other instead of reaching out to the community. And I think that gets us into a lot more trouble than we need to be. So I guess what I'm saying is, don't let that happen here. Okay, please. You know, take a look, just take a look at the agenda, you know, it's like five minutes, you know, every, twice a month, just take a quick look. If it's nothing of concern to you, you know, you did it. And I, and I, I'll, I thank you for it. But we need, we need to, we need to keep it real. And for it to keep it real, we need you to participate. Because otherwise, like I said, we know, we'll end up, we're just talking to ourselves. That's not, that's not the best-case scenario. Best-case scenario includes you, every single one of you. So, all right, take it seriously. And please vote for me on August 20th. And my website is votelauramoss.com. And I'm on Facebook. And I want to thank Dory Stone and the entire staff of the Indian River County Chamber of Commerce for hosting this. Because what is it about? It's allowing us It's allowing us, well, like me, to be face-to-face with you. And I hope I put a pretty good face on things that didn't scare anybody too much. But please, please participate. Thank you.